Good evening, and welcome to the November Lake Mills Area School Board Meeting. And I'm Rick Mason, the President of the Board. And our mission statement is preparing all of today's students for tomorrow's opportunities. Verification and meeting notice?
It was submitted to the Lake Mills Leader on November 1st and also posted at the Lake Mills Library, the Post Office, and the Bank of Lake Mills. The agenda was reposted on September 7th to include in an executive session.
Okay, thank you. Call to order. Roll call, please.
Don Delaney, here. Rachel Davies. Robert Tempurio. David Radell.
Here.
Richard Mason.
Here. And can we do the pledge? Stand and do the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, agenda revisions. We'll be moving item...
We'll need to move items F and G.
We're gonna move items F and G also to after...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. D and F.
D and F?
Yes.
D and F, we're gonna move those two items to after the closed session. We're gonna come back in open session and deal with those two items.
And then we can also delete item H because we don't have a professional contract to present to you this evening.
Delete H. So with those corrections, I'm gonna move approval.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the adjustments in the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Agenda is approved, so. Board reports. I'm gonna report on the search, the district administrator's search. There is a lot of changes. We have all our dates in place. One of the most important things that the board does, and the most important thing, I would say, that the board does is hire a district administrator. And we are in the process of setting up, or will be setting up, various forums with different groups of people. And the major forum that everyone needs to key into is a community forum on the 20th of November at 7:00 at the high school. And we'd like to get feedback on what the public is interested in seeing in a new district administrator. So that's the major change, or not change, but the major date that we have to remember. November 20th, 7:00, high school. Okay, so we're gonna go right down to Maggie.
So it has been a very busy month for Lake Mills High School with a record-breaking fall sports season coming to a close this past week. It is safe to say that the season was very historical. Every sports team had a phenomenal season. This past Thursday, students and members of the high school band took seven buses to Uline Field to watch the soccer team play in the state tournament for the first time in school history. Last Friday night, the football team played in their last game against Waukesha Catholic Memorial after making it to the third round of the playoffs. They also won the conference championship title for the first time since 1988. The football team was able to play in our brand-new stadium for two playoff games, and it got great feedback from students and members of the community. The girls' cross-country team won sectionals for the third year in a row and took 10th place at the state tournament. Tennis won conference, and three events continued on to the state tournament where both doubles teams made it to the second round, and Jenna Smith was named Capital Conference Tennis Player of the Year. The volleyball team ended their amazing season playing in the regional final game against Lake Country Lutheran. The biking team took 7th place overall at the state biking championships, and the equestrian team took 3rd place at their state meet. And as you can tell, we had a very exciting fall sports season with a lot of Elcat pride in our student body. This past weekend was the Lake Mills High School's performance of "You're in Town: The Musical." The students worked hard for three months on this musical, and the whole cast and crew put on a fantastic show for the community on Saturday and Sunday. Winter sports are starting up in the next few weeks, and the student body is excited to see this year of amazing athletics continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mrs. Thompson, elementary principal.
Good evening. A couple of updates from the elementary school. This past month, our teachers all participated in data team meetings where we analyzed our data, looked at how students are doing, where we want them to go, and then were able to put some programming in place, either in the classroom or through intervention supports to help all of our students succeed. Last week was the start of our parent-teacher conferences. Last Thursday, this coming Thursday, is the other half of the conference schedule, so we're hoping to see even more parents out this coming week. Back when the weather was nice in October, our first graders helped to put our school garden to bed. With the help of our community volunteers, they were able to be out in the garden, putting everything away back in the sheds, taking out all of the plants from the garden so that it's ready for the spring when the planting season starts again. Switching gears over to assessment information, I provided for you an overview of some information about assessment results. Tomorrow, on November 12th, the state and district report cards for every school district in the state will be publicly released. Sometimes when we look at those scores, the questions come up, who sets these scores? What are the scores? What do they mean? What is proficiency? And when you see the state report cards tomorrow, you'll know that they are based on four big areas of information: student achievement, student growth, closing gaps, and on track for graduation, and readiness post-high school. The big piece of this is the student assessments that go into student achievement. So in the document that I provided for you is some historical information about where the cut scores come from. Way back when, when the WKCE was still in play, many of our students, all across the state, we were scoring about 90% proficiency at that time. With educational reforms at the national level taking place over the last couple of decades, the National Education Association was looking to make sure that we could compare information state to state, and so the cut scores for the assessments started to close the gap, so to speak, so that state to state, we're looking at more similar information. So, school districts were at, or states, I should say, were asked to join one of two different consortiums, either the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium, or that's the one that Wisconsin joined when we implemented the Badger Exam. And those cut scores were based on NAEP, which is a national assessment. Students here in Lake Mills, over time, have participated in the NAEP assessment, as well as students all across the nation. And the cut scores for NAEP are very, very rigorous. So once we moved to the Badger Exam and now to the Ford Exam in the state of Wisconsin, we've seen that our proficiency, the number of students scoring advanced and proficient has changed over time. So in the state of Wisconsin, we're looking at about 50% of our students being advanced and proficient, which is a big change from when we were with the WKCE. So I just wanted to provide that information for you, kind of the historical nuances of what has led us here with educational reform and the new proficiency cut scores for our student assessment information, which will then go into our school report cards. Next month, since the release is tomorrow, I'll be able to provide you an overview of our school and district report cards. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Middle school report. Does she strike?
Okay. Ms. Bauer couldn't be here this evening, but she shared these notes. "We had a great community service day at the end of October. Our students continue to grow in both their understanding of and contribution to the community." One thing that I would add is that they survey all the kids after the event on a number of points, and I was reading, and I'm sure you saw the numbers too, that students are really growing in their connection with the community, feeling that working in their community is meaningful, and all of that data was in the report that she shared. I thought that was a really great growth area. Another item she wanted me to share is that we recently had a brief introduction to becoming a grief-sensitive school. We will tie in our current work in the social-emotional learning with this new piece of understanding. A thank you to the high school athletic department that helped us get so many of our middle school students to the soccer game last week. It was a great inspiration to our students. And then lastly, today, we had a great Veterans Day program, and she wanted to thank all the staff and families that made that possible.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Brockert?
Just a couple things I just wanted to highlight. At this time of year, there's lots of reports that are due, and so the tax levy certificates that were, we approved the tax levy at our last meeting, those certificates were sent to each municipality last week. Those were due by November 6th, so we took care of that. Now, I am working on budget reports for special ed and the total budget and the building level budget. Those are all reports that are due in the next month, so that's the projects I've been taking on. And then, at our finance committee, I highlighted for you, and I just also included it in this board meeting information, the building level annual report, which was submitted to the DPI by October 31st. A copy of that is available, and that was for last year, the 2018-19 school year.
Thank you. Mrs. Strike, district administrator.
So I'm gonna start, first of all, with some notes from Mr. Vogel. He is at the Fall Sports Recognition Night at the high school, and so he has several notes to share with you. First of all, he is now the safety coordinator for our district. And so tonight, we'll, we have the safety plan for your approval, and so he has these update notes. There is a, there are minor edits to the contacts at a glance concerning staff changes, so those are phone numbers and names. Those have been changed. There are also additional edits concerning the high school because of the renovation and addition, so all the maps have to be redone. All of the evacuation room numbers, destination, team leaders, where they'll shelter, all of that has been completed. And then he goes on to say, "Congratulations to the entire cast and crew of the musical. It was a tremendous success this past weekend. A big thank you to the cast and crew, and a special thanks to Mrs. Highstreet and all the directors." "Lake Mills High School hosted a successful Veterans Day program today, and thanks to Mr. Herman and the National Honor Society for organizing that event. During the Lake Mills High School November staff meeting, staff participated in a WISE dash workshop to learn more about accessing and utilizing all the data that we input to the state so that they can improve instructional practices. And the Lake Mills High School will be hosting a parent seminar on ACT method test programming, a test prep program, this Thursday at 6:00, and that would be during parent-teacher conferences. And the purpose of that is to learn the strategies needed to feel confident about test day. This webinar will include an overview of the ACT and some of the tips and tricks to help your child succeed. You will also learn how to use Method Test Prep online platform to prepare for the exam and target your areas of weakness." Then he highlights some upcoming events. As I mentioned, on the 14th, it's parent-teacher conferences. Believe it or not, I feel like we just finished, but with fall sports, but the first girls' basketball game is November 19th. On the 30th, the boys will have their first home opener. On December 10th, wrestling will have their home opener. And December 12th will be the band and orchestra concert at 7:00, and then on December 17th will be the choir concert. And all of those are really exceptional, and of course, the community is invited to all of those. All right, moving on to my notes for this evening. I had the privilege to go to all three of the Veterans Day ceremonies at each of the schools. The elementary school was on Friday, and then the middle school and high school were today, and a lot of the veterans go to all three of them. And I think one of the really exceptional things about it is that you get to see students understanding of Veterans Day and celebrating those veterans and honoring them in such different ways at each of the buildings, and each of them is very moving and very emotional, and it's really a great time of the year to do that, so I thank the buildings for doing that. Of course, my congratulations to the sports team, fall sports teams, but also to the community for all their support. You've maybe seen, there's a soccer banner on Main Street that was provided by the parents. Community members, businesses in the community have supported taking the coach buses for all the teams going to state. It's just been, just a great ride, but I think too, is, something that's been really nice is that our young students get to see success, and hard work comes from starting young and really working hard, so that's been great for the whole community. I thought, "You're in Town," first of all, they were very flexible, and they moved the Friday performance so that people could attend the football, last football game. So the Friday night performance was moved to Saturday, so the kids did two performances on Saturday and then on Sunday, and I hope you got to see it, because it was really exceptional. We have so much talent, and congratulations to all of them. So first, some sad news, though. Dr. Mason's term on the school board will be completed in March of 2020, and so he will need to make some decisions about if he'll be running again, and there's timelines for him to tell us that. But beginning December 1st through January 7th, any candidate from the Lake Mills Area School District can file their paperwork for nomination with us at the district office. And we'll repeat that often. I'd like to share some highlights of the recreation department update. The complete report is attached, and it contains all of the fall participation numbers. But another thing I wanted to highlight is that we're serving between, somewhere between 35 and 40 students before and after school in our new childcare program, and we still have two openings for staff members. So if anyone in the community is interested in a part-time position, you can contact Ben Dayton at the rec department, and we would love to talk to you about helping us with that program. This month, in the partnership between Club 55 and Rock Lake Activity Center and the Recreation Department, we were awarded a $10,000 grant to support updates at the new Club 55 room at Rock Lake Activity Center, and that's from the Greater Watertown Health Foundation. And then finally, is the quarterly social media report, and you can see which Facebook posts had the most likes and interactions, and what's going on with Twitter and Instagram. But what I took away from this is that even though many of our staff members might choose to use Twitter or Instagram to get out information, by far, our greatest engagement is in Facebook. So we need to continue to share all that same information from Twitter and Instagram, also in Facebook, and then we need to help all of our community's members know about all these avenues. It was really important this last month with all the sports scores. So we'll make sure we get information out about how people can engage with us and get up-to-date reports on all of those kinds of things.
Okay, thank you. Community input.
Mr. Brad Clotz is here.
I see Mr. Clotz way out there.
Good evening, board members. Tonight, IU will be voting on the professional, the proposal to help staff salaries to keep up with the cost of living, and I would like to restate that we are grateful for the ability to meet and confer with you on this, to hear from the LMEA directly. I'll say again that it was not an easy conversation that we had, but it was one that needed to happen. We appreciate your willingness to look into the proposal and pass or fail. I believe that it is when we work together that we do our best work, so thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Consent agenda. These are the items on the consent agenda. Approval of October 14th, regular board of education meeting minutes. Approval of December 14th, of October 14th, rather, finance committee proceedings. Approval of October 15th, board of education work session proceedings. Approval of October 28th, special board of education minutes. Approval of November 5th, special board of education minutes. Approval of vouchers and invoices. Approval of treasurer's report. And approval of support staff letters of assignment. Does anybody want to pull anything out of that?
Just H? No, that one is, that was, so there, it's action item H that we needed to take out. Okay. Just regard that.
So, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the consent agenda. Roll call, please.
Don Delaney, aye. David Radell.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that is approved unanimously. Action items: Approval of Lake Mills Area School District Safety Plan.
I wanted to share with you that last year, we did this in closed session, because this is a confidential document, but we wanted to make it very public that our safety plan is very complete. It's complex, it's up-to-date. We meet in June to review all the safety plans and drills, and we make changes and edits as needed. And so I just wanted to just publicly state that although we're approving it here tonight, there are aspects of this that are confidential, and so we can't share that with the public.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, for the board to approve the 1920 Lake Mills Area School District Safety Plan, and note that it contains confidential information that will not be shared with the public. Moved in second to approve the safety plan. Any questions or comments on that? Roll call, please.
David Radell.
Aye.
Don Delaney.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Approval of Lake Mills School District calendar for next year.
So, I don't know if anybody has looked so far as to Labor Day of 2020, but it does fall in the second week of September this year. So there's some, some talk around town, like, when is the first day of school? So we thought we'd really get ahead of our typical schedule and work on the calendar for next year. So we will start school, and this is by state statute, on September 1st, okay? But Labor Day will fall after that. So we wanted to make sure that we get all that information out to people. We have worked on this calendar with the admin team, with the leadership team, and there were some options that we could go with, and so we surveyed the staff about their preferences. And so, the calendar is before you, and it was determined that we will have spring break in a week that includes Good Friday into Easter. Sometimes you see the pattern of us having spring break the third week in March, and that is typically when Easter is falling later into April, and we know that kids really need a break around the third to fourth week of March, so that works well here. And I think, I mean, I can answer any questions about the choices that we made, but it really follows the pattern that we had this year. And it has professional development closer, or at the beginning of the year. Staff responded really well to that, and they liked easing into the school year and having work time and professional development at the same time. We were able to incorporate the Wellness Day, and teachers reported really being relaxed going into the school year. They didn't feel rushed in having their classrooms ready and, as well as doing professional development, so we're gonna keep that pattern. And with this calendar in 2021, the last day of school would be June 4th, and graduation could actually return to Memorial Day weekend.
Take a motion, please.
I move the board approve the proposed calendar for the 2020-21 school year and release it for immediate distribution.
Moved in second to approve the proposed calendar. Any questions or comments on that? Roll call, please.
Don Delaney, aye. David Radell.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of sponsorship for Lake Mills High School outdoor facility.
As we complete the facility at the high school, we had the ability to have some space on our scoreboard for sponsorships, and we're thrilled to announce that the Lake Mills Market, Chapter 2, Greenwood State Bank, and Culvers have all offered to enter into agreement with us for a five-year posting of their information on the scoreboard.
I move the board accept the generous contributions from the Lake Mills Market, Chapter 2, Greenwood State Bank, and Culvers of Lake Mills as five-year sponsors on the new athletic scoreboard at Lake Mills High School.
Moved in second to approve the sponsorship at the new athletic field. Any questions on that? Roll call.
David Radell.
Aye.
Don Delaney, aye. Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of employee handbook.
Okay, we're gonna save that until after closed session.
Okay, we're gonna delay the "the." Approval of the handbook until after closed session.
Yes.
Approval of grants.
We receive so many grants, and so I really like to bring these to the board so that you can acknowledge them. There are two different grants here. Just to clarify, Title III Consortium Grant that allows funding for our English language learners, and then we also receive a grant from the state to pay for all of the software that is required to do professional evaluations.
I'll make a motion that the board accept the following grants: Title III Consortium Grant totaling $3,225, and the Educator Effectiveness Grant totaling $7,680.
Second.
Mr. Radell, second. All right, questions on that? Comments? Roll call.
Don Delaney, aye. David Radell.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of MOU, Memorandum of Understanding for the Lake Mills Youth Basketball Club.
And we're gonna wait for that after the closed session, so we have a quorum, yeah.
Yep.
Approval of professional staff resignation.
I mentioned last month that this is kind of a new phenomenon for us to receive professional staff resignations mid-year, and Mr. Eric Angel from the high school has submitted his resignation at this time.
I move the board accept the resignation of Mr. Eric Angel as English Social Studies teacher at the high school.
Moved in second to approve the resignation. Any questions on that? Roll call, please.
David Radell.
Aye.
Don Delaney, aye. Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. Approval of the professional contracts, are we gonna hold that, too?
We're gonna have that for next month.
For next month?
Yes.
Delay that to next month?
Yes.
Approval of gifts. Mr. Radell.
I move the board accept the following gifts and thank the generous donors for their continued support of the students and programs of the Lake Mills Area School District. A donation of cheese from Crystal Farms for the high school's family and consumer sciences mac and cheese throwdown. A $100 donation by John and Kathy Golds to the high school's music department. An LED light to illuminate the American flag at the Lake Mills High School's multipurpose field donated by the American Legion Post 67 with a value of $100. A freezer donated by Terry and Pam Strike to the Recreation Department with an estimated value of $150. $180 donation from the Rotary Club of Lake Mills to the high school's interact club. A $300 anonymous donation to the Family Connections Fund. A coach bus donation from the Lake Mills Market for the boys' soccer team's state travel with a value of $500. A coach bus donation from Fiber Dome Incorporated for the boys' soccer team's state travel with a value of $500. A $1,000 donation from the American Legion Post 67 to the elementary school's backpack program, and a coach bus donated by the Lake Mills Market for the cross-country team's state travel with a value of $1,200.
Moved in second to approve these generous donations to the school district. Roll call, please.
Don Delaney, aye. David Radell.
Aye.
Richard Mason.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. How about board agenda notes for next month?
We hope to have a professional contract for the replacement for Eric Angel next month. I know that we'll have a support staff contract approval. We had some interviews today. Letter of assignment.
Audit report? An audit report?
It's January.
January?
All of the, the school report cards will be released by that time, and so we'll be celebrating that success.
Okay, a motion to go in an executive session.